Okay, call to order. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and by authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, May 14, 2019, 6:00 PM, City Council Chambers, Building 1, 2nd Floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is for the City Council to consider and take action regarding the federal FY 2019-20 Resource Management Plan, Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Plan, reconciled proposal, and Council Members Abbott and Moss' proposal. Okay, and now, at this point, can we get the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, we vote forward. Do we have a motion regarding passage of the 2019-20 Resource Management Plan, Operating and Budget and Capital Improvement Plan? Okay, oh, speakers, never mind.
Roll call.
I thought we had to do the-
A little speed bump there.
I'm sorry, we need to do roll call, please.
Oh, roll call.
We can do it on the vote machine.
I'm discombobulated today, my apologies. Okay.
If you'd like to use the vote board to signify that you're here, it's fine, you can do that.
Okay.
Thank you. All present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, at this time, the Speaker Policy. I want to remind everyone that City Council Speaker Policy, that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes, applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the Chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. Okay.
First speaker is Nicole Davis, and then the second speaker is Gigi Oliveri.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Council Members. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Nicole Davis, and I'm the new Executive Director of the Independence Center, and I want to thank you for your continued support for us. The work that we do at the Independence Center works to help people with disabilities move past diagnosis. Oftentimes, when you obtain a disability and you go to your doctor, they work to help you understand the medical concerns, what that will mean, but it kind of often stops there. They don't always talk to you about how to engage back in the workplace, or how to engage and get a ramp so that you can leave your home and actually go and work, and those are many of the phone calls that we deal with. We deal with participants in Virginia Beach who want to seek a life past diagnosis, who want to live in the community. We have, so far this fiscal year, successfully transitioned one individual from the nursing home back into the community, allowing them to thrive and enjoy, live a life that they're made proud of. We've served, so far, 1,770 individuals in Virginia Beach, and out of those, we've accomplished 882 goals. And what that means is that we've worked with people one-on-one to help them understand exactly where they're going, so that they set the goal, but we don't just stop there. We help identify the services and supports that are needed, so that they can actually accomplish it, so that people can actually go back to work. Oftentimes, there can be a misconception that when you have a disability, work isn't an option, and it's a fear. You hear the word disability check, and you think, "I could never go back to work. I'll lose my health insurance." And we work to help educate not only them, but the family and the school system, so that they can pursue and live a life that they're made proud of. We thank you for the support that you've given the Independence Center throughout the years, and we look to seek additional support as we continue to build upon the foundation that's already been there, to see what else can be done, to see exactly how more integrated our communities can be, so that when you look out, disability is not seen as a segment or that's pushed aside or kept in the back. They're a part of everything that we do. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Gigi Oliveri? And, I'm sorry, I may have messed your name up, I'm sorry. And Jackie Bowe?
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to, I want to give you a laugh. This is only the second time I've ever entered one, came to one of these meetings. I just saw you recently, and I saw the TV out there, and I was listening, and I says, "I wonder if they know there's a camera and I'm listening." I'm looking around, thinking, "I didn't know that it was a public thing." So, I just want to say thank you to each of you, and I know they said, Mr. Hanson, and Mayor, and all of you, City Council, I just thank you for the privilege to be here. I'm with ECI. I was asked to come tonight to speak on behalf of ECI as a client. This is the Director, and I'm actually a client. I have disabilities which are unapparent. There's people with apparent, unapparent, I don't have devices. My disabilities are more inside than they are outside. I was very humbled when Rena Lewis, my advocate at ECI, asked me to speak here this evening. Rena has been with ECI 28 years, and she knows me well. I wear my heart on my sleeve, I don't wear any fig leaves. I tell it like it is, if I have a complaint, I'm going to say something. If I have a good thing to say, a praise report, you better believe I'm going to say something. And yes, that is a Brooklyn accent, in case any of you were wondering. I'm a very visual kind of person, so I'm going to ask you to just bear with me about what ECI has done for me as a client. I'm sure you're all familiar with the story of David and Goliath, and David had a best friend named Jonathan, and Jonathan said to David, "If anything should ever happen to me, would you take care of my family?" Many, many years later, David was king, and he says, "Hey, is there anyone left in the family of Jonathan?" And they said, "Yeah, Jonathan had a son." And what happened is when Saul, Jonathan's father, and Jonathan got killed, the nurse panicked. She was taking care of Jonathan's five-year-old son. Because she panicked, she ran, and she dropped him. He became lame and crippled. So David said, "Where is he? Go get him." And he ran, and they got him, and he came, and his name, I say, it's Mephibis Seth. It's in the 2nd Samuel in the Bible. And there he is, and he's coming. And King David, we've all been dropped, whether it's on the outside, physically, emotionally, mentally, we all been dropped. And King David welcomed him into the kingdom, restored everything back to him that was his from his grandfather Saul and David. I share all that, because those open arms, when you come. I was dropped, but I didn't stay down. I was dropped a few times. I say that because my dad stabbed my mom, he stabbed my brother.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Oh, I just was giving you a little test, okay, I went too far, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I just, are you telling me I'm done?
Yep, red lights on, three minutes.
Oh, that was three minutes, okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Jackie Bowe and Michelle Riley?
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Council, it's a privilege to be here today, because you represent us. I'm here today asking that you take a look at the budget. In terms of an item, I'm representing the Princess Anne County Training School slash Union Kempesville Museum. Today, we also have members who are also interested in this project. We recently learned that there was a proposal presented to Council in regards to perhaps a change in the management of the museums in the City of Virginia Beach. I'm happy to say, too, Mr. Mayor, that we've had conversations through people, through Councilman Barbara Hindley, and we also had conversation with Mrs. Wilson as well, two outstanding individuals. We were concerned about perhaps money being cut, we were concerned that certain regulations were being changed, and we were not being informed as a group. After chatting with these two ladies, I think we have come to a remedy, and we're willing to work with them on that. We were prepared to say, "Please don't vote on this issue tonight, because we think we need a little bit more identity as to what is truly the best path to take between leaving the Virginia Aquarium and going over to the," I forget the other group. Yes, that is our concern. With that, I hope you can help us with that. Again, we'd like to thank these two council persons who are stepping up to try to do what they can to help with us. We thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Michelle Riley, and after Ms. Riley is Elaine Fekety.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to see all of y'all tonight. I know that this is kind of pointless, because it's kind of obvious that you guys have already decided what you're going to do on our budget, but I feel like I have to say this anyway, just to get it off my chest. I was in y'all's retreat, I heard you all say that flooding was our number-one priority. Yet, here we are, getting ready to get a 3% city employee raise, real estate taxes going up 1.5%, waste collection going up 8.7%, storm water going up 7.6%, water rate going up 4.1%, and parks and rec getting 20.5% increase. We're getting ready to get a new dome site, a wave pool, theater, we can spend money on festivals, we can spend money on a pier, we could spend money on the sports plaques, we could spend $1 million on an amphitheater for Mount Trashmore. Got 40,000 people in Virginia Beach that are in poverty, and we're going to raise taxes. It would be one thing if there wasn't another option, but there was another option. There was a really, really viable option that Council Members Moss and Abbott and other citizens worked on, and, you know, I don't like coming to speak in front of y'all. It racks my nerves real hard. The only reason I do it is so that my kids at home understand that you have to get involved civically and speak to the people that are your elected representatives. I don't, I cannot stand this process. I think all of you are smart and probably love this city as much as I do. I would imagine that you do. But the optics of this are terrible. When y'all ask people to vote for you, y'all all talk about how you care about public engagement, and you love the city, and you care about what the voters have to say, and then time and time again, I watch people stand up here in front of y'all and ask y'all to listen, and it just feels like we get ignored. And, you know, it's starting to kind of seem like the only people in this city that matter are the bankers, and the developers, and the oceanfront businesses, and the tourists. And those are not the people that keep this city going. The people who live here are the people that matter, and they are the people that are going to turn around and vote for y'all or not vote for you. You know, I don't, I don't like standing up here and fussing at y'all. I think all of y'all are smart and good people, but this is frustrating. We can't keep having our taxes go up. I would, y'all say you want millennials to come and be in our city, how are they ever going to be able to afford to live here, when you're taxing the people out that already are here owning homes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elaine Fekety, and then the next speaker is Ree Greenman.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Well, I echo everything Michelle said. I think we've all said it, and whether you listen or not, it's a moot point as of tonight, but I was in a discussion with someone last night over raising taxes, and their comment to me was, "Elaine, what are you willing to give up to not have the taxes raised?" But I think it should be, "What are we getting by having the taxes raised?" Ms. Hindley, you and I have butted heads quite a bit over the last couple of years, but I have to commend you for last week's informal session, where you brought to light, asked the City Manager, "What exactly is being done for the southern watershed?" And the answer, basically, in short version, was not a damn thing. You asked him to clarify if the studies that are being talked about in this budget are not going to be completed until 2032. That's not a mistake, 2032, that's 13 years. You asked the question, and he replied, "Yes." He also replied that he knows we're growing impatient learning about this new science. Southern watershed is not new science. Clogged ditches are not new science. Stormwater drains, maintenance pipes, Nemo Parkway as an idea, none of this is new science. These should be addressed now. So you asked the question, the answer that you got, "Are you going to vote for this?" And I have to ask you, Ms. Wilson, Mr. Bellucci, you have an election in six months. Princess Anne County, Princess Anne District is a big district. Are you going to come to Punggoh and Sandbridge with this budget that does nothing, nothing, to address the southern watershed? Southern tides are not new things, and they are not addressed in this budget. Three to five of you will be campaigning in another year. Again, my same question. We're not going to forget, we're still going to be flooded. What are we getting from this budget? Nothing. What are we giving you? Now I'm on to the Sandbridge TIF, TIF, excuse me. Your $8 million, you're going to vote whether we like it or not, to put it back in reverse funds. $4 million goes to Mr. Hanson to divvy up, $4 million goes to the school board to divvy up. Every year, it's your slush fund. Remember this, it's not the TIP. The tourists are not paying all of this. The residents' real estate taxes are paying this. How much longer are we going to be your slush fund? By now, over the last, what, 12 years, it's been $8 million a year? We could have paid for all phases of Nemo Parkway. We could have given money to Punggoh to help with their drainage issues. We could have done all of that, and still we're paying our sand tax. So next year, please think about that part of the budget, before it becomes a lawsuit when we're trapped and emergency services are not there for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ree Greenman, and then the next speaker is Diana Howard.
Welcome, Ree.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Members of City Council, Mr. Hanson. I realize this is a futile effort. I'm going to take it in a different direction. I'm a huge fan of Game of Thrones, and one of the things that makes Game of Thrones something that you want to watch is they do the unexpected. Tonight, you have an opportunity to really throw us a curveball here, do a little Game of Thrones action. Actually, for once, work with your coworkers. Instead of being Daenerys and burning us all down with endless taxes and fees, take a look at this option that's been brought before you. Surprise us. Now, Mr. Bellucci, Mr. Tower, you really haven't been involved in all of this that very long. If I were in your shoes, I would abstain from voting on this, because you haven't been involved in the process, and I would encourage you to do that. Your call. Erin, you really ought to partner up with these two, they brought you a better option. You should support what they do. We've got three minutes here, $2 billion budget, you know, not enough time for me to go through all the ordinances that are listed up on here that you want me to talk about. Sandbridge thing, I lived in Sandbridge for 13 years. That's outrageous. I paid higher taxes than anybody else in the city to take care of my shares, so that I could keep the beach, the public beach filled, and you robbed that money to fritter away, just as Elaine was telling you. I could go on and on about these ordinances in here, but I don't have enough time. And yet, this meeting is supposed to be you, as my representatives, wanting to hear what we have to say, Barbara, so that you vote the way we're asking you to vote. But as others have pointed out, that's not the process. You've got special interests feeding you a line. You really do. The proof is in the reality, Erin. Year after year, we hear, "Invest in this, Mr. Hanson, invest in a wave pool, invest in this, and it's going to increase tourism and reduce our taxes." Really? When has that happened? I've lived here 40 years, it hasn't happened. Lastly, I guess, you put out these really nice little cards, but do you ever really kind of bother to look at them? Because they're kind of good, a little synopsis. And what do you see when you look at this card? The source of the money you're spending is from us, the residents, and from the state, which is our state taxes. The rest of it's noise on this revenue. You're here to do for us what we need. Do the right thing. Surprise us. Vote for the Moss-Abbott, the Moss-Abbott budget. Stop raising the taxes and fees, and give us a break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Howard, and then the next speaker is Carol Webb-Darden.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, I was really disappointed when I watched the informal session last week, and Councilman Wood was reading how you listened, you all listened to everybody's speak, and you went on Facebook and seen all the comments and stuff like that, and then you ran off this list of new spending, it's like over $11 million, and I was like, we didn't listen to anybody that came up here and spoke, not this almost 60 people that came up here and said they had to tighten their belts, they were worried about how they were going to retire, how they were, you know, not able to pay their bills, there was all those people that get their waters shut off and stuff, the lady that was up here saying how she was in poverty, and she was the real deal. We didn't pay any attention to them. The only people we paid attention to was the staff that came and said, "We need more money for this, we need more money for that, and they'll thank you for helping them with spending more." But we didn't find any money to not do a tax and fee increase. We had a $91.5 million surplus in 2018. $24 million was the schools, $8 million was the TIF, the TIP Fund, and the other one was the Sandbridge TIF. And they'll all have surpluses again this year. So that left $51 million, right? Fifty-one and a half. None of it went into what Mr. Hanson calls the number-one priority, which is stormwater. None of it went in the CIP. But we're going to raise taxes for that. Now, recently, I was at a forum, and Mr. Leahy was over there saying that we couldn't use the TIP for the, for the stormwater, and that we, only way we could address that is raising taxes and fees. Well, I found that, you know, just really amazing, and somebody asked me, "Do you know how much the TIP gives the general fund?" Well, the TIP doesn't give anything to the general fund, we give to the TIP, right? You all decided to divvy up taxes and put them in all these little boxes here, and say, "This much is going to go to the TIP." We're going to give them, you know, the hotel taxes, which we only get less than 2% of the 8%, we're going to give them the amusement tax, we get 100% of that, and we only get half, half of the real estate, I mean, the Neil's tax. So why don't we get half of the amusement tax? We're here all year long. You say you want to make this a year-round resort, yet we're not going to get nothing from the wave pool, it's amusement tax. We're not going to get anything from that entertainment venue, because it's amusement tax. We're not going to get anything from the housing and the, and the stuff, because you're going to put that in a TIP, just like Town Senate, and the TIP, you're expanding that. We get nothing from the TIP. It doesn't pay for education, it doesn't pay for public safety, and we're the ones that have to keep paying and paying and paying.
Thank you, Diana.
Carol Webb-Darden, and then the next speaker is Dr. Rick Klobuchar.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Carol Webb-Darden, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. I'm here to speak in opposition to the plan to rearrange the Francis Land House. I think that the lady probably has a real good idea with her 1942 house exhibit idea, but it probably should be done in a 1942 house. And I saw Mrs. Minifer last night, and I understand what she's talking about. It was very moving. But the Francis Land House is quite a unique thing for the City of Virginia Beach to own, and we've spent a fortune, I think, on rearranging it, and it probably needs some upkeep now. And I don't, am not knowledgeable enough to know whether it needs a huge amount of money spent on the gallery upstairs, but I do not think it should be turned into a 1942 example house. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern.
Dr. Rick Klobuchar, and then the next speaker is Phyllis Sawyer.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Rick Klobuchar, I represent the President of the Friends of the Historic Houses of Virginia Beach, and we're here to speak in support of Rosemary Wilson's proposal to transfer the responsibility and the authority of the historic houses from the aquarium to the Office of Cultural Affairs, to be a, to be a department. So, as the, as the President of the Friends, we've been in continuous support of the historic houses since 1985, and I'm joined here today by representatives of the Council of Garden Clubs, Virginia Beach Beautification Commission, master gardeners, and I've got reason to believe that the Princess Anne Historic Society would also be in support of this.
No, sir, but we have taken no position.
Right, they're, right, I understand. But some members, okay, all right. I did have a chance today to talk to, to Bill Gambrell, who's on the, who's the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and while they have not taken a position also, he is, Bill has authorized me to say that he is also in support of that, and as are several other members that we are aware of. I think it's also interesting that since this idea of being able to migrate the houses over that DeWitt, and Whitehurst-Buffington, and several others have also called as well, and Rosemary has certainly gotten, gotten the details of that. So we are behind this, and we think it will be a great future, and I'm followed by a couple of other speakers who will give the positions of, of the Council of Garden Clubs and others. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Phyllis Sawyer, and after Ms. Sawyer is Virginia Wasserberg.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, City Manager, I'm Phyllis Sawyer, and I'm President of the Whitehurst-Buffington House Foundation, and I'm sure some of you are familiar with the house, since it's right across the street from us. So I would like to also speak in support of Ms. Wilson's proposal for placing the historic homes under the umbrella of cultural arts. These homes are a very, very valuable part of our heritage and part of the culture of the City of Virginia Beach, and I can think of no more appropriate place for them to be than under the cultural arts umbrella. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much.
Virginia Wasserberg, and then after Ms. Wasserberg is Linda Collins.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Appreciate y'all having us here this evening. I asked, when I checked in, what could I sign up to speak on, and they just said, I guess, everything here. So, in the, in the Resource Management Plan, Item E, ordinances and resolutions, there's 20 items, and there's just not enough time in three minutes to speak on all 20 items in the operating budget and the capital budget. It would have been good to have been able to address a few items individually, you know, with three minutes each, but we didn't have that. So, I just want to say that, you know, I think, I think you understand, I'm, I'm in support of the people's budget. I think it does a lot of good, and I support it. But, you know, regardless of that, I attend the Red Church on the corner of Rosemont Road and South Plaza, and this Sunday, Pastor Jase O'Neill challenged us. He challenged us to find times when we saw things that weren't so great, which is kind of what I see in this budget, and he challenged us to be able to find something good. So, I'm not here to talk about something bad, I'm going to talk about something good. And it's been a challenge to me to try to figure out what is good about this budget. Well, yesterday, I had the privilege of attending the CTAC Civic League and sitting on a panel. And what's good about that is that I found out that there are many communities around Virginia Beach that are coming together and saying the same thing about how spending is too high, about how they want to take care of flooding, about how they want to protect their neighborhoods. And I think that's good, because the communities around Virginia Beach need to come together. And in a way, this budget's bringing us together. And, you know, what, what else is good here tonight? What can I find that's, that's good about that? I have a new representative for Rose Hall. I'm really happy to have a new representative in Rose Hall, and I look forward to voting for a representative in November. And what else is good is we have, we have other new representatives on our council. And what else is good is we have other new representatives on our council. We actually have some diversity on our council now. And that's a good thing. So, you know, you got to do what you got to do with this budget tonight. But the best thing that I can find is that communities are coming together. And as we move forward, please continue to involve the communities, continue to involve the civic leagues, and listen to what the people have to say. Because the people are coming together on our city, and that's something good.
Thank you very much.
Linda Collins. And after Ms. Collins is Bill Bailey.
Welcome.
This is my first time speaking at city council. Yeah, I'm not going to ask you to not raise taxes and fees because I know you've already decided what you're going to do. But I would ask you to remember that the citizens of Virginia Beach are the ones that pay the price when you do raise taxes and fees. My mother is on social security. She can't afford another twenty dollars here and there for taxes and fees when they go up. You're going to hurt her, and in turn, you're going to hurt me. So, yeah. Just remember, y'all have to face us at the ballot box.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey.
Welcome, Mr. Bailey.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm William Bailey, President of Virginia Beach Professional Firefighters. I'm here to ask you to vote for the reconciliation budget. I think that it's important, after twenty years, that we're addressing the public safety pay compression issue in a long-term method. I thank each of you for your support. The presidents of the police and EMS organizations are also here. They're not going to speak tonight, so we're going to cut this short. But I did want to say that we're standing behind you, and we appreciate your support. The reality is, we've been partners for a long time, and we work well together. And I appreciate all the councils prior to yours and this group for your leadership, the efforts you've made. And I just ask simply for your support on a yes vote this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. At this point, do we have a motion? Mr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval under Item E, the reconcile budgets. Items A, one through sixteen in the operating budget. Item B, one through four in the capital budget.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, discussion at this point? Oh, yeah. Okay.
If I may, since I was called out on a couple, by a couple of speakers, I do want to clarify that this approval does include a study, which will, I hope, begin immediately, to look into southern watersheds for possible solutions to the wind tide issue, recognizing that the wind tide issue is a very different issue than the stormwater issue. But in order to accommodate stormwater, we've got to have someplace for it to go when it falls. And in order for that to happen, we really need to address this wind tide issue, which fills everything up from the south if the wind happens to be blowing from the south. And that study is going to be done within the current allocations. And we hope that we will be immediately beginning with some focus groups, inviting all people who have interest and knowledge and background. And I hope this is going to allow us to get some of the folks out who normally would not come to a committee meeting and speak, but can give us the benefit of the knowledge of their generations of knowledge about this area. So we are going to be moving forward with that, which is an extremely important component of what we do. And so all of those in the southern watershed who are interested, I hope will get in touch with us and take part. As far as the Sandbridge TIF and SSD, there will be an audit this year of both of those funds. And I appreciate the support of the auditor and the council in already getting that on the calendar. It's important that everyone understands the difference between the SSD and the TIF. The SSD is the Special Service District, which is the additional tax money that Sandbridge residents and businesses pay to fund beach replenishment and beach management. And I am pretty confident that this audit is going to show that over the years, all of the money that has been paid into the SSD has been used strictly for those purposes, which is all it can legally be used for. The TIF is a special ability that the Sandbridge taxpayers have to have their regular tax money used first for any delta that's needed for beach management. And then anything else goes into the general fund, which is where their tax money would go anyway. So we're certainly not robbing the taxpayers of Sandbridge of anything. This is just their regular tax money. But they get to use first anything that they might need to accomplish the beach restoration. And so I think also, when we have that audit, that maybe we can better explain that. And I feel pretty confident saying that we have not been robbing Sandbridge of their tax money over these years, and I hope this audit will answer those questions.
Thank you. Mr. Moss.
I'm making a substitute motion. This isn't referenced, this particular agenda item wasn't afforded a number, so I'll reference it by the title. This is City of Virginia Beach Agenda Item. Item: Council Members Abbott and Moss Proposal for the FY twenty nineteen-twenty Operating in Capital Budget and Related Ordinances. That's the agenda item. It includes the following ordinances: An ordinance making an appropriation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020 in the sum of $2,616,680 for operations. An ordinance establishing the tax levy for the real estate for the fiscal year 2020, which is the rate for the current year. An ordinance establishing the tax levy on personal property machinery and tools for the calendar year 2020, which is the same as the year 2019. An ordinance to remove the stormwater ERU increase that is now in the reconciliation budget of 3.5 cents a day. An ordinance to adopt the FY twenty slash FY twenty twenty-five capital improvement program. The following ordinances were included in the city manager's proposed budget and are also included in the Moss-Abbott budget proposal: The Sandbridge Tax Increment Financing District Surplus; The Annual Funding Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development; An ordinance to amend Sections thirty-five dash sixty-four and thirty-five dash sixty-seven of the City Code regarding elderly and disabled tax relief; An ordinance to dedicate revenue from parking fees and fines to the Parking Enterprise Fund; Five, an ordinance to amend the City Code pertaining to the water usage rate, that's a forty-nine cent increase per thousand gallons to comply with our contract with Norfolk; An ordinance to amend the boundaries of the Town Center Special Service District; Seven, Vertical Pay Compression Resolution, that's the public safety pay, both horizontal and vertical compression for supervisors and non-supervisors, and also the three-six-nine funding plan; Nine, ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds; And ten, the ordinance authorizing the issuance of water and sewer system revenue bonds. So the fundamental difference, and I'll go on to discuss it, is that this proposal does not increase the trash fee. This proposal does not increase the, I call it the rain tax, and it doesn't increase the real estate property tax. And it does all that and still meets all those needs that we talked about. So I want to talk a little bit about how we got there, and then I have a closing statement. The first thing we looked at, and I think a lot of people spoke about it here tonight and throughout all the public hearings that we have held, is that people are financially stressed. The city is too, in all fairness. All of us have too many requirements at the end of the money. But families can't go to their employer and confiscate their profits and say, pay me more money. So we went out and just took a look. What is the economy like? And I'm probably telling you stuff you probably already know. The regional economy will underperform the national economy and has consistently done so. The city's budget is growing by over three percent. And guess what? Our national economy is under, or regionally is underperforming by two percent. So we are growing city spending faster than our GDP of our region. Now, many of you may not know this. The average private sector weekly wage for the one hundred and fifty-one thousand-plus people who work in the private sector is eight hundred and four dollars a week. Now, if you just take the top two employment sectors, which is service and retail, that's seven hundred and fourteen dollars a week. That is actually ten dollars less than the real purchasing power of people who earned two, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars a week in 2009. That was the average weekly wage. So families, we all know what? We are not gaining on prices, including the price of government. Approximately forty percent of our schoolchildren are on free or reduced lunch, and many of those are in single-headed households, and they are definitely struggling in this economy. And they're paying all those fees and taxes, and their rent are directly in bills. Six point four percent of our population was in poverty in 2009. Eight percent is in poverty in 2018. That's not a positive trend line. Over eighteen thousand households and forty-three thousand residents are on SNAP, often known as food stamps. Fifty-one point five percent of the renters in 2018 spend in excess of thirty percent of their gross income on rent. That is the definition of financially stressed by the House of Urban Development. And this is when I found, was surprised, that thirty-nine thousand of our one hundred and thirty-five thousand beach water customers, that's thirty percent, had their water turned off in the last fourteen months. And right now, the average turnoff is four hundred more a month than it was a year ago. These are all signs that people are under significant pressure. I can't tell you, I had people call me and say, if their car breaks down, they got to choose to fix their car because they got to get to work, and some bill goes unpaid. So having heard that, Jessica and I said, you know, we ought to have some principles. You know, how did we come to our budget? How do we go about doing that? So we thought, you know, people really do have first right to what they earn. You know, really, it should be, the government should be last in line rather than first in line to get your check. And it's essential that the public purse shouldn't be growing faster than your income, or we're diminishing your personal standard of living. And I don't think that ever saw that anywhere in any oath I've ever taken for public office is, I have an oath to diminish your personal standard of living. But at the same time, we do have to balance the needs of today against the future. And while flooding is a threat today, it's a much bigger threat tomorrow. A much bigger threat tomorrow, and we can't wait till tomorrow to start fixing it. And I'll talk about that. And you don't increase taxes and fees when you have sufficient baseline revenues if you focus on the needs first and then tell the people you want to raise taxes for wants, like a new city hall. That's definitely a want. Forty-five million dollars of finance debt would fund a lot of flooding projects. So the reality is, public safety is the first and foremost priority of any government and any country and any locality. And flooding is public safety. Paying our public safety officers is our number one priority as well. Those should be the first bills we pay, not the last ones, the first we leave unfunded and say, we got to raise your taxes. We're raising taxes for something else that displaced flooding because that truly is a higher priority than a new city hall, a music hall. There's lots of things that are less important. So how did we, what did we go and do? Well, there's a little bit of history here. Someone talked about it tonight. The amusement tax, it's five percent on active. So if you are doing an active sport, you get taxed at five percent. But if it's a passive thing like a movie, a concert, something of that nature, you pay ten cents on the dollar. That's the amusement tax. Now, I think all of us would agree that tourists aren't paying one hundred percent of the amusement tax. All other taxes that go into the tip fund, tourism, which I have no problem supporting, but they're all of some relationship to what we think the tourism's or tourists are actually contributing. I don't think anyone would say that only tourists go to movies or only go to concerts or anything else. So our proposal was to take half of that tourist, of the amusement tax that goes into the tour, and put it back into the general fund to help us pay down some of these tax increases. Well, that was three million, five hundred and nine thousand dollars and six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Well, back in May of 2017, you know, we have a tourist advertising program. And they were paying their employees who do that tourist stuff work was paid out of the tap fund. Makes sense. You're out there doing advertising marketing. Why shouldn't the tap fund pay for those employees' wages? Makes sense. Well, in May of 2017, they moved those people into the general fund. Now, I know people made a big stink when the city manager proposed, which was my proposal, to take money from the tip fund to buy garbage trucks. But no one made a big complaint when they took out people out of the tap fund and moved them into the general fund and made us pay for it. That's eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We're proposing them to put them back inside the user base so that the tourist advertising program pays the wages of the people doing tourist advertising. Makes sense to me. That's eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Now, everybody likes to buy new cars and new vehicles, I'm sure. But they're very expensive. So we went back and looked historically what the city had spent in the past on new vehicles, and that's an area where you can tighten up. Certainly, there's risk. So we took out the five million plus buying new vehicles every year, not counting enterprise vehicles, like water and sewer and stormwater. This is just the general fund, and said, we can harvest a million dollars because if we're going to ask, families are cutting back to make do this. There's room for the city to also take some leneness and pare down their new vehicle procurement and stretch out their vehicles, just like we do at home. So that was one million, seventy-one thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Now, the city has over seven thousand positions. Seven thousand. On any given day, about five percent are vacant. So out of all that, there wasn't fifty-three point four seven positions that were less important than the new ones he's asking for. He's historically, has to solve every problem with manpower. By the way, I think out of those, out of seven thousand, he can find fifty-three point four seven jobs that are less a priority, and just like we do at home, make tough choices. I think that's true. That's three point five million dollars roughly. We did some other adjustments in the other departments for three point seven million. And lastly, we went for a lapse rate. We took part of the advantage of the lapse labor rate. And what that means is, the city has traditionally budgeted all their positions, all seven thousand plus, as if they're filled every day. But they're not. So at the end of every year, we have a surplus largely generated by over-budgeted and under-executed labor in effect. And that's where that money comes from. And of course, year after year, we have proposed this and had much, big resistance. I've been accused by someone who was left here of endangering our bond rating. But interestingly enough, in the manager's only recommended budget, he recommends funding part of the vertical compression work with what? Lapse funding rate. So, and I applaud him for recognizing the merits of not over-budgeting our positions. But if we take that full two percent, that's still, that would give us two point two million dollars. That's fourteen point eight million dollars in total, if you're doing the math. And all those taxes and fees, I mentioned that real estate, the trash fee, and the U. fee comes about fourteen-five. So we wore them at our target for not having to have. And you notice, none of those things were serious service reductions. The sun's still going to rise, your trash is still going to get picked up, your water. These weren't, I consider, tough choices. They really aren't. But we didn't stop there. We found some other stuff. Because, you know, we have some one-time revenues. We thought, well, there might be a negotiation, need a little extra. So we went and looked at some things. We went back and looked at last year's budget because we noticed that we were spending in the proposed budget in the CIP over twenty million dollars of cash each year over the six-year period on IT. Now, I applaud people for using high, for cash for a highly depreciating asset that depreciates quickly. So there's some knowledge of that. But I said, wow, let me go back and look at last year's CIP for the same year, FY twenty, the one we're talking about. Well, in FY twenty of last year, we were only going to be spending about seventeen million dollars on IT. But in this year, we bumped that up to twenty-one million for a twenty-one point something percent increase. Well, I'm sure the requirement is a good one. I'm not questioning that. But when you're asking people who seventy percent can't come up with four hundred dollars in a month, that's a, families, maybe you should be thinking about, I can afford to take some risks there. Do I really have to grow that much? Or can I put that towards? How about building down that back twelve-year backlog and ditching canal maintenance? Because the current budget as proposed, that's the main motion, doesn't address the twelve year backlog till three years from now and FY twenty-three. Something tells me, if that's your number one priority, but it's flooding, but maintenance, to get rid of a backlog can wait for three years? You've got the wrong priorities, in my personal opinion, but that's for others to judge. And so that came up, and that gave us, got us up to about nineteen million dollars total. Now, I can appreciate my peers come to a different conclusion, and I'm not going to say their vote's the wrong one. I'm only trying to share with you why I'm voting the way I'm voting, and I, and then I'll come back and talk to that. But here's a little bit to put this in a philosophical perspective because this, we are confiscating people's income. Tax is a nice word for confiscation, but make know about is the coercive power of of the state. One of the biggest challenges in approaching a decision on a vote to use the coercive power of government to confiscate the wealth and income of private individuals and businesses for public purposes is to put the decision in the proper context. Archie Ball McLeish, the poet and librarian of Congress, wrote, "Democracy is never a thing done. Democracy is always something that a nation must be doing." Our republic, which is a representative democracy, was forged on the principles set forth in the Declaration of Independence and constitutes the American creed given birth by the lives lost and the sacrifices made over three thousand eighty-nine days of the American Revolution. It's now almost ninety thousand days later. We are struggling to give meaning to advancing the cause of God-granted liberties, limited government, individualism over collectivism, and free enterprise, all coming together to advance each opportunities, individual opportunity, to pursue their aspirations. And taxes and fees that are unnecessary rob people of their hope, and it's not the function of government to rob people of their hope and diminish their standard of living. American founders warned us of the dangers of a government misaligned with the voice of the people and inclined to grow its purse at the private expense. Each of us at the public hearings and in very high volume of emails have heard from beach residents make their voice known that they want us, the city council, to live within our means. The no increase in taxes and fee rates has been most explicitly made clear in many of those voices. Equally clear is a message that investing in flood mitigation projects is more important than a new city hall, an oceanfront music hall, and other wants before need expenditures. They are frustrated, we've heard it tonight and other nights, that their voices as owners and the city bill payers are not being acted on. I'm gonna read a few of these emails that I received, so people can hear directly what we've all heard. Pamela Hewin, out at the courthouse area, just emailed us today, and she shared in part, quote, "Hello, I'm a concerned citizen living in Virginia Beach. I understand there is talk of raising taxes and fees on the good folks in Virginia Beach. I feel that we pay too much already. We have lived here for thirty-five years now, and taxes and fees are constantly going up. It is a constant struggle just to keep up now. I'm sure this will fall on deaf ears, but I had to try." The fact that someone would express that, and then that's their conclusion, we are alienating the very people we're supposed to serve. This is a sad signal. If you were, this was an environment, you'd say, this is ecosystem that's got problems. Ronald Christsack emailed us, and part shared, "In two thousand and eight, my utility bill was four hundred and eighty dollars, whereas in two thousand and eighteen, the bill was one thousand and sixty-eight dollars for the year. This is a fifty-five percent increase in just ten years. I only wish my retirement pay increased the same amount. You are making it extremely difficult for the grassroots retirement community to sustain themselves, develop a plan that shows no increases in the tax rate and no increase in overall taxes," unquote. James Rick Boils wrote in part, "I live in a fifty-six-year-old house. If something is broken, I fix it. I don't go build a new house. If the house is not up to code, then the city makes me fix it. You need to fix the buildings you have and quit building monuments to yourselves around the city. You don't need a new city hall. Fix what you own. Understand?" Question mark, close quote. And the last quote was from a Mary G. McFannan, a thirty-three-year resident and retired who lives in Level Green, and she wrote in an email, quote, "I urge you to consider the budgets of the citizens. You are looking at the needs and the wants of the city, but there are alternate sources of funds for nearly all of them. Try living on social security," unquote. I could read emails like this for hours, and I know all of you received these emails, and I trust that you read them all, because they were heart-touching to just know for people to share such personal aspects of their life and their financial situation. It certainly was a concern of the founders that if and when the power of government and the power of concentrated wealth fused together, such that virtue in government was displaced by special interests, then the voices of the people, like a light breeze, would be felt without effect. I share the sentiment of the voices of beach residents petitioning us not to inflict additional financial hardship on them in the forms of increased taxes and fees when they are clearly unnecessary. I share the sentiment and voices of beach residents who have been victimized by flooding and remain vulnerable to flooding, while a new ocean music hall, front ocean music hall and a new city hall are a higher priority than addressing the twelve-year backlog and ditch and canal maintenance. Like beach residents who have petitioned us to live within our means, I too am ignorant of why my colleagues today are on their way to voting with an apparent indifference for a CIP that is composed of misplaced taxes and fee increases and puts wants before needs. My colleagues owe me no reasoning, and likewise, me to them. Each member of this body is only accountable to you, the voters. I leave it to the voters to decide for themselves who has best served the will and aspirations of this, of theirs. Joined by Councilmember Abbott and I and a collection of residents, we developed this budget. It's a no-tax increase, a no-trash fee, a no-stormwater increase, and it funded public safety compensation, and it funded full-day kindergarten, which does the reconciliation of, and that is one area where we had consensus, and that is a good news story of all this. These are disrespectful differences. Our budget also provided for a bond referendum, which everybody at council at the retreat agreed to, but somehow never made into the budget, to give you in November twenty twenty the right to vote on, like we did with Gaston and those projects back in eighty-six, where you put the actual projects in, and give you an opportunity to not have to wait fifteen years to protect your home, but allow us to accelerate and invest in our neighborhoods and communities and protect them, including raising roads in the southern part of the city as a first step. And matter of fact, our budget has that in it, to raise the roads, as part of that taking the money from the new city hall to raise roads and other stuff. And I think we can do that in eight years. And in closing, I just want to mention why I'm not supporting the next vote on the reconciliation budget. There are two items here among all the, and this thing is, this is what I call a weaponized budget. It's weaponized to run those nice campaign, which I'm sure you all saw me on TV. Mr. Moss voted against education. No, Mr. Moss voted against an unnecessary tax increase for public, for full-day kindergarten, just like tonight, we're funding it without a tax increase. And Mr. Moss didn't vote against flooding, he voted against a, a lesser-funded program that was once again wrongly prioritized so we could fund wants over needs, but they don't say that. So I understand when I don't vote for the reconciliation budget, and someone's gonna, Mr. Moss voted against item, the vertical pay. But you heard me read, our budget had that in it. What this is, is saying to avoid that negative half-truth, you have to sign up to impoverish people and take money from them that we shouldn't take. And I'm willing to take all the negatives in the world not to bind to something that I would be ashamed that I voted for. And so I will be voting no on the main motion.
Okay, we have a substitute motion.
I second the substitute motion.
Okay, we're voting on the substitute motion.
We'll have to vote.
Vote to accept it.
Okay, we have a vote to accept the, to accept the substitute motion.
Okay.
By a vote of two to nine, the substitute motion failed.
Okay, do we have, go back to the original motion? Okay, we have a second?
We already did.
Okay. Vote's open.
One second, Scott.
No, it's not.
It's open now.
I'm sorry, we're voting to, to, to vote on the vote?
Main motion.
The main motion.
You want to discuss?
We're, we're voting on the main motion?
Yes.
Oh, a discussion, please.
Okay, discussion.
I didn't, I wanted to save my comments for this part. I believe in supporting full-day kindergarten for all students of Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and I believe in funding a solution to pay disparity for our public safety professionals. I think that we, as a council, can agree that our stellar schools and our public safety are deserving of our support, and I am not against what this budget is trying to accomplish. While I stand in opposition to the proposed budget, my vote of no is actually a vote of yes to support you, the people of Virginia Beach. I'm voting to support young families, seniors living on fixed income, and everyone of every economic background. I am voting for a budget that mirrors the economic realities faced by several thousands of our constituents, and I am voting, voting for the forty-four percent of the families of our students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. I'm voting for the eight percent of our community that lives below the poverty line, and I am voting for the majority of the renters who are financially stressed in this city who spend more than thirty percent of their income on rent. I'm voting for our economically disadvantaged residents who will be disproportionately burdened from any tax or fee increase, which is inherently regressive. Knowing the impact that these taxes and fees increases have on families trying to make ends meet, I cannot support the proposed budget in good faith. The estimated economic impact of this proposed tax and fee increase is a hundred and eight dollars a year. And while that may be, be just a number on a balance sheet to some, in reality, it carries more meaning. It's sports equipment for a child's rec league, it's classroom supplies for a teacher that must pay out of their own pocket. It is another cost that must be accounted for elsewhere in a family's budget. And we are essentially demanding families to accomplish a mission that we ourselves, as a council, have failed to put needs before wants. I'm sorry, I prepared a lot of remarks, and I, I think, when I had a town hall, I want to, I'm gonna go off script, sorry. I had a town hall on Saturday, and one of the residents said something to me that has resonated, especially because over the last couple of days, I have continued to hear it. I am too rich for help, but I am too poor to make it. And that is the reality for an enormous amount of families. And I, I understand why funding full-day kindergarten is a priority, because it costs three hundred and seventy-five dollars a week to send two kids to childcare, aside from the econ, the academic benefits of kindergarten. And I understand why we need to pay our public safety officials a fair wage and a better wage. But I believe this budget is a tax increase disguised as a solution. And I'm not going to continue these remarks, but I just want everyone in this room to understand and to know. I support the people of Virginia Beach, and I look forward to working with everyone at this dais next year on improving our budget process and hopefully finding a solution to our water bill and all of our fees and our tax increases, and hopefully we can create a better plan next year moving forward. Thank you.
Anybody else for discussion? Okay, vote's open.
By a vote of nine to two, you've approved the reconciled proposal in the CIP budget, operating and, and, operating and capital budgets.
Okay. Any, any other business?
We do, there's some other ordinances.
Oh, the ordinance.
The lockbox issue and the family leave thing are in here.
Okay, we're gonna go to item number three, number one, ordinances, the restrictive movement of stormwater funds requested by Councilman Moss.
Well, actually, there's two. Yeah, there's two on the same lockbox thing, and if you, and I would draw your attention, and I don't want to, I'll let Rosemary, the city manager, I mean, the city attorney wrote us a note saying these are not mutually exclusive. And, and we may, and I mention this as you look at, because mine is very, much more detailed, and there's a reason, and maybe it should be expanded to include all the trustee accounts. You may recall, when we did the reconciliation budget last year, the proposal was to go to various acquisitions to pay for the garbage truck stuff, but as it came back from the city manager, he went to the tip fund and moved that money out of the tip fund to go buy garbage truck, and I voted for it too, as all council adopted it, so I'm not making myself distinct from that, that's just how we got there, and how that was done on short notice, and people took, as we all heard, took great offense that we had made a, violated something. So when I, when I was constructing this particular ordinance, I was thinking about making sure that there was a time firewall, so I'm gonna read this, since the public probably hasn't had the benefit, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go right ahead, please.
This is an ordinance to restrict the movement of stormwater funds. Whereas the city council desires to state its intention to implement a lockbox feature upon the funds that it appropriates to stormwater management, they'll now therefore be ordained by the city council, the city of Virginia Beach, that the city council's appropriation of fifty-five million dollars to the stormwater section of the capital improvement plan shall be subject to the following restrictions. One, notwithstanding any transfer authority set forth in the CIP appropriation ordinance, the city shall have, the city council should have the sole authority to transfer funds among the various projects in the stormwater section of CIP, and such funds shall not be transferred out of the stormwater section of the CIP. Two, prior to any action to transfer funds appropriated to the stormwater management section of the CIP, an advertisement shall be placed in the newspaper ten days prior to the public hearing upon a proposed transfer of the appropriated funds in the stormwater management section. Be it further ordained that, upon adoption of the CIP appropriation ordinance, the council opposes upon itself a two-thirds affirmative vote of the elected members of the council for any change to the five-year program funding for the stormwater section of the CIP. But as you hear that, a civil majority could repeal that provision. This is, once again, getting back to just creating a, a big, a stronger firewall about that. And then if the voters of the city, be further ordained that, if the voters of the city approve a bond referendum for the issuance of stormwater debt, the council shall honor the will of the voters as to the funding approved in such bond referendum. And that's about, that's the terms of that, and I'll leave to Rosemary to talk to her.
Well, number three is, I originally had asked for the lockbox for the stormwater real estate fee, so that it only could be used for that purpose, and John's really gone way beyond more than, than I wanted. Number three really fulfills the purpose for what I asked for, so I'm gonna support the one that I asked for, number three.
Well, I'm gonna move for the adoption of the one I have, and I'm gonna just discuss a little bit, and you can also, is that because we know, because it happened, that the, what we did with the tip fund, I suspect if my ordinance was in place, and we had an advertisement, and all the people that were affected by the tip and getting their money would have come down and spoke with us, I suspect we would have looked at that differently. And I think when we're asking people, and we're, and if you keep what the program has proposed, we'll be raising taxes another four cents over the near term, on top of the two cents that we're talking about, one point five cents we're talking about now, I, I think, but I think this provides more protection than this does. And so I'm for the stronger, a stronger, more stringent control over the money.
Okay, anybody else?
Mayor, so I've been approached, we, there's some, a speaker that would like to speak on this, I'm sorry, I did not sign anybody up on this, I thought this was.
Oh, that's not a problem, people do have the right to speak.
Ms. Wasserberg, would you like to speak? Okay.
So just for clarity, we have a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Three, one, is that correct?
Ray, just.
But there's no, there's no number on this thing that I have.
Three, one, and two.
There is.
What's on that? I was just, it's not on this thing.
No, it's on the main agenda.
Okay. Yes, it's, yes, it's the first one, three, one.
Actually, what, you're, you made an ordinance to adopt one, and then I think.
I didn't talk to two, I only talked to one.
We're all, we're only on item three, one.
Well, John needs a second, so, second.
Okay, discussion, okay.
Well, I guess calling the.
Well, we normally do.
Okay. Virginia?
Sorry.
Come on forward.
And just for, my own personal clarity, I'm speaking on three, one, is that?
Three, one.
Correct? Okay. Um, yeah, well, I, I support this one hundred percent. I, I asked you for it in one of the, the town halls, I did a poll on Stop the Flooding Now, and, you know, about three hundred people said that if you were gonna raise our fees for flooding, then use it for flooding. Unfortunately, stormwater in and of itself is not just flooding, and I think it's important for everybody to understand that, that stormwater is also water quality and a number of other things, but this is a step in the right direction. So, you know, one day maybe we'll get there with a flood control program, but for now, please support three, one. The ordinance to restrict the movement of stormwater funds requested by Councilmember Moss. Thank you for that request, Councilmember.
Okay, anybody else?
Mayor, I believe, Mr. Grayman would like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Prior to this, I called and tried to get clarity to understand, with all the things you've put on here, why we're limited to three minutes, and I was told I could only speak for three minutes, period, on everything on here. I'm glad that you at least considered to give us another opportunity to talk on these individual items. You should have applied that to all of these things, because they're tremendously complicated. And three minutes just doesn't do us justice to tell you what we want. and three minutes just doesn't do us justice to tell you what we want you to do. Rosemary, his plan is better. His plan does give much more, your job is to manage the money for us. You're raising our taxes, we told you to fix this problem. He's giving you a better plan. Y'all are gonna vote and control the money. There isn't anything wrong with what John's saying, but what it's doing is it just says you're gonna raise the money for this, you guys have to deliberate and include us in the process, and allow us the chance to come up here and say, before you rob the money out of that fund for something else, here's what we think about it, and you should want to hear from us, all of you. Your job is to watch the money. Mr. Hanson's job is to do what you tell him to do, because he works for you. This is a good improvement. The community will support this, but you really haven't even taken the time to find that out, have you? I mean, have you really discussed this and gone out and polled people to find out what they think about this? No, but you're gonna vote on it tonight. Do the right thing. You had the opportunity on the budget, you didn't do it. Well, do the right thing here. At least give us something tonight. Put a lockbox on this money. You still can spend it on somewhere else if you want, but you guys damn well better include us in the process, and make sure eight of you wanna do that. You're gonna raise the money for stormwater, spend it on stormwater, and Virginia's right. I mean, I read all this stuff, water qualities in there, there's all other kinds of things mixed up in there. Fix the flooding! My God! You know, I go to Tabernacle United Methodist Church, first time in 200 years, they canceled Easter at my church because it was too flooded, in 200 years. Lock up the money. He gave you a good idea, you turn him down on the budget, work with him on this. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else like to speak?
Conrad, Mr. Sisbenter.
Good on that name. Welcome.
Try and be a little bit brief. I just observed you guys already raised the tax for stormwater anyway, so I'll just join Virginia. I'll join Reed. Lock it in place, spin it on what it's designed for, don't put it anywhere else in the city, and that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're, don't, because I just, the comment that I wanted to make on this is, is I think Ms. Wilson's is, is better than this one. I, I don't, I take issue with the, the supermajority requirement for this, because everything else is a, is a six-vote issue, and then the 10-day advertising is, is something I think that doubles the time, because, how long do we normally advertise? Or, or Amanda, you could probably tell us the same thing. It's like, we advertise at least a week out, but the, for the, so, so that's, that's, that's where my opinion, that's why I'm, I'm not gonna support this one, I'm gonna support item three, because that actually does the, does the same thing, but it doesn't add these, these additional burdens.
Yeah, John.
Just so you know, the budget for the adoption of the budget does require a 10-day notice, there's a, not great, less than, not more than 10 or less than 14 when we do the real estate tax increase notice, there's a notice that that requires.
That was 30 days.
Yep, so, so there is other things that are more than 10.
Right.
But 10 is not for us, 10 is for them. 10 is for the people, not 10 isn't for us. But, I understand.
Okay, anybody else? Rosemary.
This is, this is a dedication of the 1/10 of the real estate tax. This is to be dedicated just for that.
What is number three?
Yes.
Okay, number three.
And, and I brought it up initially, that it was to be used, in fact, Ms. Wasserberg was so nice to call me, and thank you for it.
But this applies to all money, independent of its source, the 3.5 cent daily rate increase, some of that's in the CIP as well, it's not just the real estate tax increase, it's all revenues in the capital improvement plan.
All right, anybody else at this point? Okay, votes open.
So, I'm sorry, just to, for clarity, the vote is for Mr. Moss's version, and Ms. Abbott's second, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, just wanted to make sure I was on the right. So, can we vote for number? By a vote of three to eight, that, that motion failed.
Government never likes to be limited. I'd like to move on to item 1.2.
Okay. Resolution to direct the city manager to develop and implement a policy of paid six weeks family leave requested by Councilmember.
This is an item we discussed the last year's budget, and we said, you know, really, we thought we should be moving towards six weeks, but we only did three, you may recall that conversation, and I brought this up at a number of the workshops that we had, and I thought this was something that reflected both the demographics of our workforce, where people are taking care of elderly parents, plus dealt with young people having children with very little sick leave, and then they come back to work, and their kids get sick because they're in daycare, and that's like a germ factory, and next thing you know, they're a negative thing on leave, and this is something that very progressive Fortune 500 companies have already adopted on a large-scale basis, is to have six weeks of family leave, whether it's for the birth of a child, or take care of elderly parent, or an elderly spouse, or a very sick child, but I realize it has implications to do it overnight, and I, and I was listening to the city manager's body language as I was talking about this during the workshop, and so I thought a, a, a way that would, could make this easier to implement would be to add one week a year over the next three years, so it could be phased in. We did have the person from HR mention that they have not had a high utilization of this so far, but it was something that was greatly appreciated by the people that had to have it, and I think it's gonna help us on recruiting, because I know just from my own people who work a lot of hours, the thing that people most appreciate is when they can get time off to do something that they have to do, and usually it's related to more, nowadays it's more about an elderly parent than it is about a child, and with 65, with 10,000 people turning 65 every day, if you're not dealing with an elderly parent this week, you will be in the coming weeks, and there's things that you need, wanna be able to do with them, so they can retire in place, but they need help, and often they have resource constraints. So this was the purpose of this, I think this is a, something that if you really think your people are your number-one asset in delivering services, this is something that we should be doing, and I think a three-week, a three-year phase in makes this platable to do, and doesn't, well, the staff will have time to implement, because they really, doesn't say implement one October, it's just implement before the budget year ends, and so I would move for its adoption.
Second.
Okay, Rosemary?
I'm not saying this isn't a worthy thing, because I, families and believing on them, I would really like more information. I mean, this just sort of appeared on the agenda, I, we really haven't discussed it or, that I remember, that, I mean, to have information from the manager over time and further information, that's what I would like to see.
Well, I agree, I just like, it was discussed, no one responded.
See the fiscal implications, and to know really more what's involved.
There has been as much discussion on this issue today, on this, on the workshops, as we had on the initial thing that was adopted for three weeks. I'm not, so we can't wait, I'm just pointing out is, there wasn't any more discussion when we adopted three weeks than this one. I'm happy to defer this to a subsequent vote to get the details, but I just wanna make the public understand, it's not like I didn't discuss it, it didn't get much response at the table, but I've mentioned it more than once, and the manager talked a little bit about, a little bit about the fiscal implications, and then you may remember, the HR director said that the current policy, while well-received, wasn't being much used, that was her quote, and so I think it is doable, but I'm happy to defer and have them bring back. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that would be.
I'm not, I'm.
With everything else that we've had to deal with, would you mind?
Oh, and I said, I am happy to defer, but I'd like to defer it to a certain date on the agenda, maybe the, but, I don't, Mr. Hanson thinks by the third meeting in June, we can have the appropriate understanding of this, that would be a great date.
So, Mr. Moss, do you think we can discuss it at the next workshop, and then schedule it for a vote, and that way we can hash it out, because I would really like to get behind some of this.
Well, then, what I'd like to know is, I don't, when we say the details, I'm trying to figure out, someone has to do that work, and so I would turn to the city manager, when, and not like next year, but when would the staff be in a position to provide us the material that would?
What date did you say?
I said, could we vote the third meeting in June?
That's, that's good.
Yeah.
And the workshop would then be before, I'm just.
Yeah, if we can have a workshop in it before, to really hash it out. Mr. Hanson, could we do that?
Yes, I was just gonna make sure that the council and the listening public understood that we currently have a program. We provide paid leave to our birthing mothers for three weeks, we provide paid leave for the non-birthing parent or adoptive parent for two weeks, and we provide paid leave to our employees who are home for one week to take care of sick, sick parents. Adding another six weeks of paid leave, it, it becomes potentially concerning. I, I would like an opportunity to work out a proposal back to the council of how they might be able to apply their earned leave or have donated leave beyond the three weeks that you currently fund for them to do that, so that you can reach that six-week window, if that's the major concern of the body, and I would like an opportunity to give you a white paper on the background of what your current policies are, what you're currently providing to our employees at no cost to them in support of their parental, newborn parental issues, and then also, if, if you want me to get to six weeks, maybe a better way to do that.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
We have had in the past sort of a policy that we don't adopt anything unless we know how it's gonna be paid for, and the ink hasn't even dried on our new budget, and we're about to add something that's going to be a substantial cost, so I certainly think that before we adopt this, although it sounds laudable, we really need to know what the cost is and where the money's gonna come from to pay for it, so I would hope that would be.
We adopted the last one, we didn't have a fiscal house.
Well, two wrongs don't make a right.
No, it shouldn't cost anything.
Right. But I'll tell you what, I think it would be prudent, and thank you, Mr. Moss, for agreeing to defer this, because I think if we talk about it in a workshop, and then, you know, schedule it for a vote, I think that would be the thing to do.
I'd like to amend my motion, so I can still, it would be in the record, because we've said a lot of stuff, but no one's amended, that the item, and, on the motion, be amended to read to come back to the council on the third, I don't know what the date actually is.
June 18th?
June 18th.
Okay.
Second.
And that the COAs would include a couple of things.
Okay, okay, motion for deferral.
Mr. Moss, so by a vote of.
Oh, I thought, yes.
I thought, okay, so by a vote of 11 to zero, and Mr. Moss correcting his vote.
Thank you for cracking my.
11 to zero, you've deferred this item until June 18th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, item three, three, ordinance to dedicate revenue from 1.5 cent real estate tax to create stormwater debt capacity rate flood mitigation projects.
Move to approve.
Second.
So I believe Ms. Ms. Wasserberg, would you like, Ms. Wasserberg would like to speak on this item?
I'm sorry, I'll wait till she speaks.
Okay, welcome.
So I just, you know, pull up the ordinance in, in front of me here, and I guess, I hope you're not confused, because I am, you know, and that is, it says a 1.5 cent increase of the real estate tax, is that in addition to?
No, no.
The increase that you just did, or?
The same point.
So it's 1.5 of the increase?
It's the one we just passed.
Okay, so it's one, 1.5 cent of the $1.
It's dedicating, so it can't be used for anything else.
It's, okay, so this is a dedication of funding?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, well, as I said before, I'm in support of a dedication of funding. If you're gonna raise my taxes, and you're gonna raise my fees, like you just did, then dedicate it to flooding, please.
This is why it's, it's a tax, not a duty.
Yes, John, then Jess.
When I was talking to the city attorney's staff earlier today about this 1.5 cents, I was educated that not all the revenue of the 1.5 cents is actually distributed and budgeted and appropriated to the stormwater section of the CIP, is that correct?
The 1.5 cents is used to transfer stormwater-related activities that are currently in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund to the general fund to pay for the same programs that they do in the stormwater, thereby freeing the ERU rate so that we can pursue additional long-term debt funding, and in a sense, be able to secure $10 for every $1 that we invest and accelerate our program. It is key to being able to create the 15-year, $1.3 billion program necessary to take on recurrent flooding inside our city.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
How is then, in the accounting structure and the cost-down codes that go in the budget as you execute it, are you identifying the revenues and putting the business rules in the system such that you effectively have oversight and can account back to us that any of the funds that are transferred to the general funds to these other places later through some other reprogramming action or whatever else weren't spent for some other person? Are they gonna have their own separate restriction cost code? How are you isolating that in the financial system to maintain the integrity of the ordinance?
As I do with all budgets, any reduction to programs are identified in the annual budget, or are identified through an ordinance to the city council, thereby transferring the use of those funds to another program or another CIP. And we do not unilaterally, as a staff, cut a program and move those funds without your authorization and knowledge through the process of an agenda.
What I was asking specifically, in the financial accounting and expenditure system that implements the ordinances that we adopt, will the funds that are moved into the general fund have its own accounting code for transactional purposes such that we can maintain the integrity and audit trail of the money as it's moved? That's different from the ordinance.
I understand that, and so if, with permission of the.
Yes, go right ahead.
Mayor, I'll have my budget director tell you how he counts for that.
Well, there are codes that we can set up in, in the accounting system, and we can do program codes. My only, the way I understand the issue, my only concern is what the city manager said, the 1 1/2 cent is gonna be funded in the general fund, it's not necessarily for projects, and I just want to be clear on that, the, the funding is in the stormwater program that the manager was getting at, this shift helps us fund more projects than that, and that's in the enterprise fund.
I, I clearly understood that, but I now heard it is, that we will need to establish the codes in the accounting system.
We can do that, Mr. Moss.
That's what I'm, that's the way you can comply with the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay, Jess.
Would it be possible that we include some advertising mechanism in this? I'm fine with it not being a supermajority vote, but just so that we can notify the public that if we decide to move money, that they're adequately notified, and I'm, I'm open to whatever that's, that could be.
Sure.
Well, how is it normally advertised?
So it's normally just by the normal standard process, so it's advertised in the beacon on, it's, it's available online on Thursday afternoon prior to the Tuesday formal session, and it's advertised in the beacon on the Sunday prior to the Tuesday formal session.
So if we, if we adopt this, and we choose to use money for something else, it would already be advertised?
You would have to reappropriate, if I may.
Yeah, yes, sir.
If, if we take funds from one program that you have appropriated through your budget, and we wanna move it to another CIP project, we will bring forth an ordinance requiring the reprogramming of those dollars, and we will notify you the rationale why we're taking the money away from Project A, and the purpose for which we are putting it towards Project B. It will be on an advertised agenda, and in all likelihood, depending on the magnitude of it, we will brief you in advance so that you are informed through a, through a briefing at a workshop or otherwise, if, if it's significant. Otherwise, we will probably reach out and inform you some method, cover letter to that ordinance, and it'll be advertised, it'll be an ordinance, and you'll have to vote on it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point, votes open.
By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the ordinance to dedicate the revenue to flood mitigation projects.
Anything else at this point? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.